I want to welcome all of you to the HRO Today Forum Town Hall. Now, I want to tell you there's something very special about this. This is the only town hall taking place this year where we promise no one is running for president. Okay, so that's actually a good thing. So, we solicited the audience for a bunch of questions and we're going to go over those. We have a few that we do have, and if time permits, we're going to go to the audience in the room to ask questions as well. So, we have, I'm going to be acting as moderator. I want to invite our town hall speakers to the stage. You've been introduced so many times, I'm not going to do it again. Professor Peter Papelli, Dr. Peter Papelli, from the Wharton School, who is going to share his wit and wisdom on all things HR. And we have Alina Polenskaya. Alina is the leader of the diversity and inclusion practice at Corn Fairy International, and Alina works with a tremendous variety of companies of large and mid-market, trying to rationalize diversity and inclusion and talking about culture and those kinds of things. So, I'm going to be the moderator, and as I said, if time permits, we're going to come out to you for some questions. I want to first take care of the questions that were sent in. And the first question was sent in for Peter. This one would be very happy, Peter. I like making Peter happy. This question is about your radio show in the workplace this past Thursday. How many of you listen to Peter's radio show?
Not everyone listens.
All right. So, your radio show talked about the issue of gender equity and the question on the radio show, they discussed how, apparently it started with men and women, that greedy work, I think was the phrase used to describe it, greedy jobs, had essentially changed the dynamic, and that's one of the reasons why women who are more likely to be in job care roles were not keeping pace with it. So, I was wondering if that created difficulty achieving the C-suite itself. What can companies do to balance the diversity issues and work-life balance issues? And then, Harley, should this be up to corporations to solve this problem, or is it a family issue?
Good question, and maybe Alina's got on this as well. I should say, at first, that nobody in my family listens to my radio show, except the dog. And the reason she listens to it is she has no choice, because she doesn't have an opposable thumb, and she can't get up and turn the thing off. So, you're not alone.
So, your wife is running the dog.
Yeah, I added one listener. This was actually a story written by a reporter in the New York Times, and the story was looking at people in occupations that sociologists have referred to as greedy. And by that they meant that these are occupations that completely demand all of your time. So, executive roles suit this, fit this dimension. There's some consulting positions, people billing by the hour for those sorts of jobs. One of the consequences seems to be that the amount of money you make is not linearly related with the number of hours you work. That is, once you start working really a lot of hours, your pay goes up a lot. You may know this book by a fellow, Robert Frank and Cornell, a few years ago, called The Winner-Take-All Side. If you win, you get the big prizes, and if you come in second, you don't get anywhere near as much. So, what she was noticing is she was looking at these two career couples in these fields, investment banking and big-time law firms and big corporate jobs. And one of the things she discovered is, they would start out together, both working roughly the same kinds of jobs, and then one of them would give up. It was almost always the wife when they had children. And her point was, which was a really interesting one, and I don't know how widespread this problem is, but if they both had kept working full-time, they could not have worked at the pace necessary to be at the very top of their fields and have a family. But if they both worked and stepped back a little bit, so that it was possible to have two careers and also to have two full-time jobs, they would not have made anywhere near as much money as if one of them had just gone absolutely full-tilt into their career. Now, that's a really interesting phenomenon. Let's just assert for a minute that it's true, assume it's true. Then, what do you do about this, right? And I think the problem is, I don't know that there's anything that a company could do about this, because it's not a work-life balance problem in the usual sense. It is a problem of the total amount of work and dedication required to get to the very top of these very top jobs, right? And companies could say, "We're just not going to play that game for the people at the very top." Consulting companies could say, "We're not going to play that game for the people at the very top." It would change the way you compensate people, it would change the way you assess people, it would change all kinds of things about it. And I guess it's an interesting question. Is it better, is there something wrong with the phenomenon where, in a couple, one person working alone could make more than both of them together? The fact that women disproportionately are making the choice to step down, that's an interesting problem. Is it an employer's problem? I don't know. So, I mean, it strikes me, these are ethical questions more than they are corporate policy questions.
All right. I'm going to get Alina's perspective on this as well. So, in short, the question is, should we continue to punch women for working hard to maintain the future existence of our species? And apparently, a lot of people think yes. Not that he said that, but that's one way to interpret the data. So, Alina, what do you say about this, the dual-career family? That if you really want to make it in this world big, you've got to work 80 hours a week, and if there's a choice between the man and the woman, as to who's going to take that lifestyle, a lot of times a woman steps back, and that's part of the, what we'll call, explainable gender equity issue. What do you think about this topic, greedy work?
Yes, I think this is interesting, and we can either kind of accept the status quo in the final pass, just okay, it's fine. And probably we will not see much changes. We already know that it's going to take more than 200 years to get to gender parity according to the World's Gender Report, that the World's Gender Report releases every year. And part of it is the reality of our work. And I frankly think that we need to go deeper than the surface and look why this is the dynamic that we see. Now, is it really necessary to work those long hours to become a leader? Is that a true condition? Can we question that? And I think that is what needs to happen, is how do we design our work? Because the way our work right now designed does not match the realities of our lives, and that is a huge gap. Until we address that gap, I don't think we go to see fundamental progress. It's not a women's issue. I think there are a lot of men who worked a lot of career, older generation, when we talk to them, say, "Looking back, I wish I spent more time with my family." They're not remembering the fantastic accomplishments of their career. It's about regrets that they have, missing out on the time spending with their children. We also see the millennial, the new generation is shaking up very different with their values. Men want to be part of their families, just as they want to do successful careers. So, how do we fix that mismatch? I think that's the fundamental question. And work-life balance is not a gender balance. It's not a diversity issue. It's an issue for everyone. It's just that women tend to take those roles, women take the take-career roles more. And another question is, how do we value, how much do we value carey responsibility?
How many of you have programs to promote work-life balance in your organizations to create a culture where there's work-life balance? How many of you have programs? Just by show of hands. Okay. How many of you have had a meeting on a Saturday because your executive team had to get together for something? All right.
The best one is, how many of you have had a work-life balance meeting on Saturday? I know, sorry, but a large corporation, I'll tell you as soon as we turn the mics off, which one it was, the Saturday work-life balance.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, yeah.
And can I make another point? My question is, if that's a responsibility of corporations, to ensure that that happens? And I personally think that corporations absolutely need to play a very important role with that. I mean, if you can rely on countries, we're not going to go far, particularly in the US if it comes to, for example, issues around leave, parental leave or maternity leave. I'm sure many people know that in the United States, New Guinea, and another country, they're the only three countries in the world that have a big maternity leave law. And if a country doesn't take responsibility for that, it really comes down to, whatever it comes down to, women carrying the high workload on the caregiving responsibilities. And certainly, companies, they want to take advantage of their full talent. They are starting to, in fact, to step in. And on the point of these, we had an HPD, CHRO, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure Alan is here today, but HPD just launched a parental leave policy, which is a six-month, full-paid, gender-neutral program. And I think this moves like this require, this is, that's tangible and that's real, and I just want to apologize to you for that.
I think, though, if I could just add about the greedy work thing, per se, I think this is not an hours-of-work issue, right? This is a, people are in competition with each other for the top jobs. And if we said, "You can only work so many hours a week," and we somehow going to enforce that, there's still an effort in the energy story. And I think the problem is, at least the greedy work story, which is not the whole work-life balance story by any means, it's one slice of it, is that if you've got that model, this is going to be a very hard problem to crack. And if you don't have that model, then what is the one? And I don't think we've got a clear answer to that. If we don't run a competition, maybe we shouldn't, but if we don't run a competition where the most successful person gets the top job, or the most successful person gets the most money, maybe we shouldn't do it that way, but if we are, we're ending up in this problem anyway. And I think traditional work-life balance problem solutions are not going to help in that way, right? It's not an hours-of-work thing, per se.
But, you know, there is a perspective, sort of the death-in-the-middle player of management, the standard control that was pushed up through the ranks has become so onerous, that what's happened in these latter organizations is that it's very, you know, there are essentially less known manager jobs, but the higher-paying jobs that we're talking about have become hourly jobs. They're just taken done for us, and that is a corporate problem, if you think about it. We have another question that was sent in, and this one, I think, is because of Alina's role in doing DNI. And I'm going to show you a slide. Some of you may have seen this in the mass media. Someone sent this in asking about a company, they ran a job posting, and in the job postings, you can see on the screen, they very clearly stipulated Caucasians preferred, okay? You just can't even make this stuff up. Now, this, by the way, is an IT staffing company in the DC area. I got the question from a local DC person, actually. Now, employees involved, I did some research on this, they were summarily fired. But the question, Alina, is, what did it say about an organization's culture? That they felt this was okay, the capital letters, and what steps should be taken immediately to address that culture?
This is a great example, and I think it's not just culture. There are probably a few things that were broken. And I also want to say that there are a lot of companies that are doing that, they've just gone advertising this openly. There are, you know, I think there are a lot of companies, inadvertently, so unconscious bias, have done position processes or talent management processes that perhaps filtering through some of the talent segments. And we know that the issue of racism, which is what you see here, is systemic issue, is self-creditation, is a fundamental gap. Now, this is, you know, this could be a crisis, a crisis for an organization, particularly for large companies with low rank and low grades, and we see that happening. There is a incident with New York Times, and it happens to the best organizations, some that have pretty robust and credible DNI programs. We've seen it with Pepsi and Unilever and Starbucks and Novorilla. This German just made, I'm just, a few years ago, a very powerful week, comments, and the brand was boycotted for many years. So, what do you do when that happens? So, first of all, don't waste a good crisis. There's some positive in that, it creates motivation for action. When this happens, certainly there needs to be immediate, I think, action taken, taking a jump, which is managing from the DNI perspective. And typically, companies with their senior leaders will take accountability and apologize, and then work that through, making sure some reinforced messages and actions are taken. But then, secondly, most importantly, the organizations need to take a deep look and understand systematically what's happening. What happened, that this, there was a set of decisions, a set of focal goals, that led to this type of event? So, typically, we would suggest that companies will get it from structural and behavioral perspective. So, we tend to talk about culture, but there's also processes and practices that are potent and that lead towards this types of events. So, it's important to review those processes and practices and understand, are there any potential liabilities that might be creating in how we operate? And then, look at it from the behavioral perspective, what kind of mindset we have, what kind of leaders, our leaders, inclusive and all. Do they recognize a significance of their action under shadow that they cast? And then, of course, create the awareness and increase the skill-building among the key employees and managers and everyone who's involved in this. And I would say that looking at the decision-making will be key, because this is where those choices really happen.
So, how, Peter, you want to comment on that, or?
I don't know.
Okay. So, the next question actually was sent in, and so this is probably for Peter. Is Terry here? Terry Lewis? Who are you, Terry? Do you want to ask a question? I'm going to read it.
Looking for your perspective, just on any unique metrics that you see the trends going towards beyond the standard. We all look at turnover retention, across hire, that sort of thing. Is there any trends that you see in workforce analytics that are something new?
Is there anything new in workforce analytics, is the question?
From a metric, yeah.
Metrics, right. And I think that, you know, once we dive into this, one of the things we realize is, the big problem we have in making progress in analytics is database management. We've got a lot of measures already, and the problems are, they don't talk to each other. And getting the databases in a position where you can actually look at analyses across them seems to be the big thing. I was talking about this, I guess, at one of our breakfast meetings or something, this hard life on hiring in the current Harvard Business Review. One of the things that's stunned me is that less than a third of US employers collect metadata that allows them to see whether their practices lead to good hires or not. They're not even collecting that stuff. So, I'm not sure that we need better or different measures. We're awash with possible measures. I think the problem is more for employers to figure out, what is it they actually want to know, right? And then, what are we going to do with the data if we get it? Because I think at the moment, the problem is, we haven't been able to do much with the data we've already got, even on simple things like who's a good performer. And I think the efforts are more in the direction of trying to analyze what we've found already rather than anything, you know, more sophisticated. I mean, the one thing that I've heard people start to use on hiring, just because it's simple, is just the simple question of, would you hire this candidate again? So, if you're starting from scratch and you don't have any measures of who's a good performer, just asking that question seems to predict something which is reasonably useful and is easy to collect.
To the extent that we're parsing data more, and I see this in some of the nominations here, you know, it seems like HR has aggregated rather than, like, if you go to the marketing department, they look at data in segments, but HR tends to look at it in maps. So, you know, for example, one of the people who was up front where last night, they looked at employee engagement and said, "Well, employee engagement across the entire organization was about 89% very good." But if they looked at it and they split out people who were from diverse populations, or the older ones, specifically, by the way, diverse populations in the larger population, excepting people who belong to employee resources, that was actually much higher than the general population. So, is HR doing enough to segment that they actually see what it's telling us?
Yeah, that's a good point. I think the issue there goes back to, what is it we really want to know? And I think for lots of organizations, particularly on engagement scores, which seem to be very popular now, and as far as we can tell, they don't predict much of anything that's actually useful to you as an employer, no. But it is a benchmark that companies like to use to compare against each other, so that's why they're doing it. And that's why they're fixated with the average number, because that's the one that companies compare themselves against. And I think you're right. What you ought to do with all these is look inside and see where there's variation and see where there's change over time, right? And lots of measures of attitudes would be useful if you did that, even if they don't predict an awful lot about who's going to be a good job performer, for example.
I believe that.
No, I agree that employee engagement surveys are so popular, but not always very helpful. But it does help if you segment them by diverse populations, because you can see the gender difference, and you can see where there are some opportunities for you potentially to go deeper and do some qualitative exploration or do some sophisticated analytics and statistical analysis. One measure that I think would be interesting, maybe, to add to those key measures to track is around health and wellbeing. So, we've been doing some more, like, we were looking at the claims, health claims, potentially, and specifically, mental health, and claims just to see how people are, how people are doing, because they're normally well, we see the impact on their health, and this is a very tangible data point, so that can tell you a story. And I'm sure, Peter, you've seen the article, the meta-analysis work that was Jeff's at her, and the book that he released, and dying for a page ad. And what stood out for me was that toxic work environment, you know, they did this meta-analysis, and the toxic work environment is the biggest largest cause of deaths in the US. And I just think it's very interesting, the kind of environments that we've created in which this can, you know, this situation can be happening in the corporate world. I think we need to think about it, and what that really means, and the impact on productivity, and how we treat each other, and how we design our work, how we structure our work. But I think that the metric around wellbeing and health would be a good one.
You know, it's funny, Jeff says he wrote that book because he was trying to get the attention of CEOs, and basically, the punchline of the book is, it's costing you a ton of money to kill your employees. If you look at healthcare costs and all that kind of stuff, this is really expensive. But that measure, just a single measure of how's your health, turns out to be actually quite predictive and quite accurate, right? So, it's a simple conclusion. If you want strange ones, here's a strange one, that some companies are using now, proximity badges. Have you seen these? So, proximity badges are little things you can wear that will tell you how close you are to other people with proximity badges. And they can do kind of sentiment analysis, so they're listening to the conversations, and they can sort of tell, are you having happy conversations when you talk to Elliot? Or are you having a lot of happy conversations where other people are angry? Now, what on earth you do with this, who knows? But if you're interested in strange metrics, boy, there's one.
All right. So, I just, did anyone else have this vision in their head of like a giant Pac-Man screen with like dots all around, you know, and the proximity badges? Like, don't group them by that?
That's a cool technology that I remember now. Do you know about Resitiviti? And it's a small AI group from, and what they do, they analyze emails, but not like the content of emails, but pronouns. It's somehow the way tracking pronouns, they can see if people are stressed, what sort of the level, and it doesn't require a disservice. It's a very different way of listening to what's going on in the next day.
Well, you talked about that at the work conference I just attended.
Yeah, these, you know, a lot of banks already do this sentiment analysis of email traffic, because they're trying to, they're, by regulation, required to look to see if anybody's stealing, right? So, there's, some of this is already going on already. I think the question that you want to ask yourself is, is there evidence this is predicting anything useful, right? And I don't think, you don't rely on, does this sound cool, right? There's a million ways to blow money on things that sound cool, but is it actually doing anything useful? And if there's no evidence it's doing anything useful, pretty good bet, it's not doing anything useful. And then, the question you want to ask yourself is, what else could I be doing with this money and this time? And that's, that's a harder, but a better test.
I don't understand why someone who is stealing from a bank would predict the bank's email system, and I don't think anyone would be dumb enough to say, "Hey, this duffel bag of cash is too heavy to carry, can you come down and help?"
You're catching bad criminals.
Yeah, I think that's it. The good criminals are really sort of eating the system, that's just stupid, I'm sorry. So, you know, the subject, and let me do this, audience questions. Let me go out and see if the audience has any questions, okay? So, a few more that came in. All right, Matt Ellenbich, FireEye.
You said that there was reasons why companies may not utilize the engagement survey data, and why they shouldn't. What leads you to believe that that information is not particularly helpful?
Matt is giving me, because I just saw a lot of employee engagement connect. He says this every time we're together, right now.
I've heard before, that's what I wanted to hear again.
Yeah, so we have another little thing coming out in the Harvard Business Review, maybe the next, I'm not sure when, where they just ask us to write something about the context of engagement surveys and where they came from as well. And they came, you know, they began as something about this idea of bringing your whole self to work, and the idea about, also, from another perspective, about exhaustion, right? Mental exhaustion. And they were never designed to predict who's doing, who's performing well. Part of the problem with employee engagement surveys, first of all, is that if you got 10 engagement surveys, they're asking 10 different questions, they're calling everything engagement, right? And so, part of the problem is, there are all kinds of claims about what engagement surveys do, but they can't, we're not agreeing even on what it is that they're asking. The second thing is, the evidence that looks on how this relates to measures of job outcomes, job performance, suggests that it explains remarkably little. Like, the addition of an engagement survey score explains maybe 2% of the variation in the job performance across people. It's not surprising that that's not what they were designed to do, right? They were really just designed, kind of as diagnostic about people's sense of kind of motivation and things like that, right? The other problem with it, even if you know people are not motivated, and you looked at the scores, you don't know why they're not motivated from the survey, nor do you know what to do about it, right? So, you know, it's something that started in the academic world, because people who started there were interested in academic questions. It got picked up, moved to the practitioner world without a lot of translation. And it's just largely an assertion that this should be useful, and it's caught on, it's one of those things that perpetuates it, because everybody does it. It sounds better, as Elliot was saying yesterday, I think at some point, it sounds better than satisfaction surveys. It sounds more concrete, so we don't do satisfaction surveys, we do engagement surveys. But we do it in the same way, for the same purpose we used to do. Satisfaction surveys, for those of you who are old enough to remember the Mayflower Group, anybody remember them?
Oh, God, yes.
The group of 20, was it 25 big companies that used to share data?
Yeah, there were 50 Mayflower library items, 55. They formed the basis of everything. You know, we wanted, we had the big lawsuit with Dell about the fact that the G12 board said you need to prove that those that were Mayflower, I know, was in one hour.
So, this goes back 50 years, at least, right?
Yeah, yeah, it does. The thing with employee engagement, and I'm looking forward to reading your article, is, you know, they start off as, quote-unquote, employee satisfaction, okay? And what we found it was good for was looking inside the data. Like, you can see, like, if your manager's who employment engagement was lower than others, then you may have an issue with that manager. And if you could tie that in the productivity of the unit, which we're always trying to like, it's recent. language research on, it did tell us things that were important. The only thing it could actually predict about job performance was actually retention, right? People who had lower engagement scores were less likely to leave, we thought, but that didn't always prove out to be true in other companies. The issue with it is it was originally employee satisfaction, for those of you who are, you know, old enough to remember those days, right? And the reason they changed the word from satisfaction to engagement is because they figured out that people who were lazy, worked in companies that didn't ask much of them, they could be very well satisfied. So they come in one day in my office about mid late eighties and say, we need to call employee engagement. And I said, well, how does changing the name make it better? It just sounds better.
Engagement sounds bad too, though.
Well, I want to get you in on this, because looking inside the data, we would see like, you know, companies that had policies that were unfriendly to women and minorities, because you can see the differences to the extent that people were willing to self-identify, you'd see some scary stuff in there. So what, when you look from the perspective of what you do, Elena, what do you see inside data in employee engagement that might be useful to Peter, let's say, just doesn't predict much?
I think they're still useful. I think the problem is if you rely on them as the only source of information, then they become less useful. You know, we often get questions like, how do you measure diversity and inclusion? What metrics do you use for that for and things like that? And I always say, the first principle is you need to have multiple sources of information and then you triangulate and you see some gaps potential that comes from those different sources of information. So I'll give you an example. So typically, when we do diversity strategy and analytics, we will look at the vital statistics, right? So of course representation of different levels, but also talent flows, the rates of hiring, rates of promotion, rates of retention, we look at that. So these are the facts. Typically, you use your HR's data to look at this. Then the second source of information would be employee perception. So what do they think about the career progression, how fair it is, how fair the performance management processes? So that's another source of information that is important, but these are perceptions. And sometimes perceptions are reality. And then the third source of information would be looking at the actual processes and practices and doing audit of those and identifying some of those potential gaps or potential biases built in or things that can be done differently. And the biggest insight is how when you take all these data sources and you triangulate and you see what's actually going on. And maybe if your, your process audit and your HR's data is showing that your promotion process is actually fair, but employees think that it is not, then the type of intervention you will take is more about communication. So how you do that, so your process is solid, but your intervention about communication. But if your employee perceptions are thinking that it's unfair and then your signal analysis shows that you potentially have some problems with your performance management, then you actually need to focus on redesigning your performance management and taking some actions. So I think it's, the key is taking those different things, not just looking at the interventions.
But part of what you're saying also raises the specter of HR's ability to engage in what I call self-delusion, okay? They may have one view of what they're doing and actually, once you crawl inside the data, you know, as consultants, you find the picture might be a little different. Peter, there are all these sacred cows like employee engagement scores, performance reviews. And it seems like at this phase of your career, you're just like literally looking to knock out all the idols, right? So, you know, Peter wrote an article about two years ago about how performance reviews and big study, how performance reviews actually did predict performance, right? So performance appraisals were ineffective, it predicted next year's performance, they don't say what happened last year. So what do you say, do you think that this is just a phenomenon in HR, you're sitting on the branch of management, where there are so many deeply held convictions about the data that may not actually like, like things like engagement scores predict actual, what the real picture is?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. You know, I think there are a lot of practices in human resources that were part of a package of things that companies used to do in the nineteen fifties, starting in the fifties. And they all made sense for a variety of reasons as a package. And they probably, as individuals, don't make a lot of sense anymore. And, you know, it is worth thinking about why that might be worse in human resources. And I think to some extent it is. I think some of it frankly is the discussion about, is this a profession, right? So if you think it's a profession as opposed to, say, an executive function, if you think it's an executive function, you're trying to figure out how to solve business problems, however, the best way is to solve it. If you think it's a profession like accounting, you are replicating best practices over and over, independent of the context. And there's a lot of, at least my feel, a lot of alacrity in human resources, right? And the talk about it being a profession perpetuates that, you know, let's just, this is the way you're supposed to do it, so we're just going to keep doing it this way. A quick anecdote on these surveys, they actually began in World War I and they were called morale surveys and they were done by the US Army. And actually, morale surveys predicted something really important. And that was that it looked like the troops were actually willing to go fight somebody else or not, right? And the measures of morale actually did seem to predict something useful about that. We continue to call them morale surveys ever since an industry picked them up and companies were calling them morale surveys fifty, sixty years later and trying to use some of the same things that were used in the military, even though it didn't map on very well to contemporary concerns, right?
Well, the original purpose of employee assessment was to determine who would suffer bad, battle for stress syndrome. That was that, that's what it was to figure out how to identify people who could tolerate the poor possessions. So is Brian required here? There you are, Brian. So Brian's sent a question, you want to ask it or are you going to read it?
I don't even remember it, go ahead.
Well, apparently it wasn't a very important question, so we'll move on. No. The question was, I have not encountered many people who would say, I love to talk to automated voice response systems, yet there's a relentless push toward AI and automation. Where is it coming from? And is it objectively measuring the voice of the AI customer? Basically, do we know if people really like this? So do you have a perspective on, if you like automated voice responses, press one. If you don't like it, Peter, please press two.
I think that's a great question. Could I illustrate with a story? One of my four PhD students sent me some pictures that he had taken on a cruise. And on this cruise ship, they had a couple of bartenders he thought were very sophisticated. And they also had a robotic bartender. There was a robot who would mix drinks for you, right? And what he said was, the robotic drinks were terrible. The bartender drinks, that was really good, the robot made terrible drinks and it took two people to support the robot so that the robot could actually get set up and make the drinks. You know, there was some novelty, I think, to people just wanting to see it done, you know? Samuel Johnson, you know, the British writer from the seventeen hundreds, said, it's like watching dogs dance. It's not that you're surprised to see it done well, you're just surprised to see it done at all, you know? Here's a robotic thing that's mixing this stuff. And I think that the reason that example strikes me relevant to the question is we see in a lot of people, I think in business, a sense that it is inevitable that we just have to get to the idea of automating all this stuff, that it will be cheaper, it will be better, so we just have to push forward, even if it doesn't work now, right? And I think the problem with that is, maybe it's true, who knows inevitable, right? But one more quick anecdote on this, and that is in the nineteen eighties, nineteen eighty-one in particular, General Motors decided the only way to compete with the Japanese was to try to get as many jobs out of the system as possible and assemble the plants and automate them. Because American workers are so lousy that the only thing we could do for quality is get rid of them and put in place robots. And General Motors spent forty-three billion dollars putting robots in its plants, which was the equivalent of the market cap of Toyota, right? This is a huge bet. And at the same time, Toyota comes into the U.S. in San Francisco or in Fremont, takes over an old General Motors plant with no technology, and it beats the pants out of every other plant in the General Motors system. The only difference was, it was actually the same employees that General Motors had before, the only difference is the way they managed them, right? And I think we deprecate the idea that management matters and we have elevated this idea that technology is somehow forgotten, right? And what happened, that General Motors actually ended up having to get rid of all those robots because one of the things they discovered is having, even though each individual robot might be quite robust, you put them in a series, as soon as any one of them breaks, the whole system goes down, right? And it turned out to be incredibly fragile. Now, maybe in fifty years, it will all be robots, right? But that's fifty years out. And in the meantime, we're probably blowing an enormous amount of money chasing this idea that it's got to be the way forward. So a CEO of a prominent U.S. company told me that he saw his job as trying to get rid of as many jobs as possible in the company. And I thought, I didn't occur to me afterwards, but a weird thing that was to say, I mean, not just that jobs are maybe a nice thing, but the idea that somehow doing that with technology is obviously the smart thing to do. And it may not be, right? So I think to some extent, this is a bias we have in the back of our heads.
Elena, what's your perspective on this? How's technology playing out in your world?
I love technology. I'm not talking to Alexa, my whole family loves talking to Alexa. And I think that technology is women's best friend and all women's. You know, I remember my grandmother, and I grew up in Siberia, and so I remember my grandmother doing the laundry on her knees in the big, you know, bath. And, you know, my grandmother was just a brilliant woman, could have been a scientist she was an engineer and then she couldn't make insights, but she was spending hours every week, you know, doing this laundry. And then I remember having this laundry machine appear in our house and then she was relieved. And I think this is like the best thing ever. And I really think that the robots are going to take a lot of the domestic duties, we're not going to see men doing that, that's not going to happen. I think it's going to be the robots and technology that will relieve a lot of the domestic duties and allow, and, you know, allow them to be more productive off the gender side. So I actually think technology is good. It's good to embrace, it's good to play with it, it's good to experiment and you need to invest a lot of money, you need to do it in a agile way and see how it works. I think there is this inclusion, the new dimension of diversity, you know, it's humans versus robots. It doesn't have to be this way, we can coexist. I mean, it just depends on need to manage the conditions. I think we need to be careful about how we design technology, who design technology, that we manage for some potential biases, we have some ethical considerations built in. We need to be careful on what kind of data we are training our AI and our technology to make sure it's not, doesn't represent half of the world, but represents the entire world. But I don't think we should shy away. I think it's, it's under certain, certain conditions, this is good, it's going to be good for us.
I should say, I'm also pro washing machine.
Okay.
So, and so is Grandma. So, you know, one of the things about technology, and that's been a quick perspective, and we're running out of time, but I want to, we may have one more question. How many radio stations were founded in nineteen twenties? Does anyone know? In just in the United States?
A lot.
About a hundred thousand. How many existed by nineteen thirty-five? About one out of five. The same exact thing happened in the late nineties with the dot com pheasant. So the question you need to ask yourself when you're looking at making bets on technology is will this be one of the five survivors? Because we all talk about, everyone who, has anyone here read Charles Darwin, The Dissent of Man? Okay, thank you. Technology is cruel, okay? And it's evolution, just like, like organic creatures are cruel, and evolution is cruel, rather, in technology, just as it is in organic creatures. Evolution is a cruel process. And the problem with HR and business in general is they try to embrace all the technology that's coming out, rather than be a little circumspect and say, you know, you know, one of the things that I know is in nineteen eighty-six, when I entered the recruiting field, the number one job in the United States for advertisements, for job ads, beyond like generities like sales, you know what that was? Number one job in the United States, number one advertised job in the United States nineteen eighty-six.
Drafting?
Behind sales.
Drafting stuff?
Key punch operator.
Key punch.
How many of you are struggling to find key punch operators today? Okay? Evolution's cruel, that's the key in technology. I think we're going to have to call it on time. I want, it's been a great town hall, okay? We know a couple of things that are in court, we talked a little bit about what's inside your data from the engagement perspective. We talked about things in HR that, you know, when you go in and look at the data, it may matter to be actually what the client thinks it is, or the things that we hold as sacred cows that are not necessarily, you know, predictive as we might think they are. And we know that Grandma really likes the washing machine. So all that's good.
That's good.
Exactly, right? And the technology, you say the technology favors the female gender, but I, I think that's just your unconscious bias.
I love it.
So, all right, I want to thank Elena Pollensky, the leader of the DNI practice from Corn Ferry, and Dr. Peter Capelli, the director of the Center for Human Resources at the Wharton School. Thank you all.